Good morning, everyone, and welcome. We concluded our last Board of Trustees meeting in late February with the anticipation that our April meeting would be held in the newly renovated Culp Student Center. In the days that followed, though, the reality of the COVID-19 outbreak and the impact of this pandemic would have on our students, our campus, this region, and our nation became quickly apparent. It was Dr. Nolan who described on numerous occasions, these are unprecedented times. For ETSU, it meant our faculty had to spend spring break moving hundreds of courses online, some for the first time. For our students, it meant transitioning to an all-online environment, and for many of them, it also meant making arrangements to move from the residence halls and return home. For employees at ETSU, it meant rethinking how we would advise students, hold recruitment events, plan for new student orientation, and conduct commencement exercises for the spring class of 2020. Yet, ETSU never lost its mission and focus, a mission to improve the quality of life for the people in our region. The faculty and staff remained focused on student success and ensuring that the current circumstances that we are facing would not be a barrier to the goals and aspirations of our students and the dream of earning a college degree. As Dr. Nolan will discuss further in his report, our students, faculty, and staff stepped forward to help the community in many ways, from offering the region's first mobile testing site and building face shields for healthcare workers, to offering assistance to small businesses, and helping support elementary and high school teachers and parents who were delivering instruction to students at home. I am very proud of how the institution responded to the uncertainties and the challenges that rose as a result of the COVID-19 outbreak. I wanted to thank the entire ETSU leadership team. I want to thank our faculty and staff for the ways they have placed students first and made adjustments that were necessary to support our students as they continued their educational pursuits. And I especially want to thank our students for their patience and their perseverance during these very uncertain times. Thank you for not letting this distract you from the reasons why you chose to attend ETSU. The reoccurring theme through all of this has been, we are in this together. We have hope and a promise of a stronger tomorrow. At this point, I now turn to Dr. Green and ask that he call the roll and run through the required questions since the meeting is being conducted via Zoom. Dr. Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Because trustees are participating remotely by Zoom, I must run through a series of questions before calling roll. Additionally, because we have trustees participating remotely, should any votes be taken, they must be taken by roll call. Trustees, in accordance with Tennessee Code 8-44-108, I have two questions to ask if you can answer. I will ask each question once and follow with a recall so that you may respond. First, are you able to clearly hear us so you can participate in this meeting? Trustee Ayers?
Yes, I can hear you.
Trustee DeCarlo? Trustee Foley?
Yes.
Trustee Golden?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Trustee Latimer?
Yes.
Trustee Santana?
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Wolf?
Yes.
Chairman Nieswenger?
Yes.
Trustees, for the record, can you please identify any person in the room in which you're participating in this meeting? Trustee Ayers?
No one's with me.
Trustee DeCarlo?
I am alone.
Trustee Foley?
I'm alone.
Trustee Golden?
I'm alone.
Bishop?
No one's with me.
I'm alone.
Trustee Santana?
I'm alone.
Trustee Ramsey?
I am alone.
Trustee Wolf?
Yes, I'm by myself.
And Chairman Nieswenger?
Solo.
Chairman, I do not detect a physical quorum present, however, a quorum does exist by the inclusion of members participating by electronic means. In accordance with Tennessee Code 8-44-108, Section B2, I would offer up to the board the following reasons that necessitate this meeting. This meeting is a regularly scheduled quarterly meeting of the ETSU Board in compliance with our bylaws and state statute. This is critical to the operations of the institution are slated for this meeting such as promotion and tenure of faculty members, tuition and fees establishment for the upcoming academic year, as well as budget planning, among other items. Due to the COVID-19 virus outbreak and subsequent recommendations from the CDC, as well as Governor Bill Lee, social distancing measures and limit on group gatherings are being observed. For these reasons, I would contend that participation by a quorum of the board members by electronic or other means of communications is necessary. Chairman, I ask that a motion be made and a roll call vote be taken for determination of the necessity of holding this meeting. An affirmative vote will signify that the necessity does exist for this meeting to proceed and signify that it does not exist for this meeting to continue.
Do I have a motion?
So moved. This is David.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, please say, oh, you gotta go roll call. Okay.
Trustee Ayers?
Yes.
Carlo?
Yes.
Foley?
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Bishop?
Yes. I can hear you.
Yes.
Trustee Ramsey?
Yes. I can hear you.
Yes.
Trustee Ramsey?
Yes.
Trustee Wolf?
Yes.
Chairman Nieswenger?
Yes.
Okay. Because this meeting is being conducted virtually, we are unable to publicly comment in our traditional manner. However, for those of you who are watching, should you have comments that you would like to make or for the board to receive, please email those comments to trustees, all caps, at ETSU.edu. Again, trustees, all caps, at ETSU.edu. At this time, I'll turn the meeting over to Dr. Nolan.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, thank you for gathering together today via Zoom, both some by phones, some over the web. And I want to apologize if at certain points today, this meeting is going to be a little bit awkward. For those of you who've spent the past few weeks, which seem like the past few years, living in a Zoom environment, you know that these sometimes can have unexpected twists and turns, so I apologize in advance for whatever those twists or turns may be. You'll notice that the form of today's meeting, from a structural perspective, is different than normal. We are operating as a committee of the whole, outside of audit, and we will hear a report from Chairman Golden from the activities of the Audit Committee that met earlier this morning. The board will take these actions together as a committee of the whole, rather than a standing academic committee and a standing finance committee. This is typically one of the most active board meetings of the calendar year. This is a meeting in which milestone events in the life of faculty are celebrated with the affirmation of a tenure and promotion recommendation. This is a meeting in which you will take action on tuition and fees and budgets. Want to acknowledge to the board that we are the first institution in the state who will act on these items. This gives us, from my perspective, a competitive advantage as we are able to then demonstrate to students and families scholarship levels and fee levels for the fall. But most importantly, and I'm going to use these words with some frequency today, those words are cares and safety. The actions that we are taking today demonstrate the values of this institution and the fact that we deeply care about the faculty and staff and students who call the university home. So as we move through today's events, I, once again, I apologize for the awkwardness of Zoom, but with that, let's go ahead and move. So within Tab 1 of your materials, and this information begins on Page 3 of the documents that were emailed to you in advance of the meeting, you have the minutes for the meeting of February 21 and the minutes of the called meeting of the board from March 23 of 2020. The minutes for each of these sessions are found between Pages 3 and 21 collectively. Mr. Chairman, I would ask that we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Proper motion by Trustee Golden, seconded by Trustee Foley. Dr. Green, would you please conduct a roll call vote to approve the minutes?
Yes, sir. Trustee Ayers?
Aye.
Trustee DeCarlo?
Aye.
Foley?
Aye.
Golden?
Aye.
Bishop?
Hi.
Trustee Latimer?
Hi.
Ramsey?
I can't hear you.
Trustee Wolf?
I'm on.
I?
Chairman Nieswenger?
Earlier this morning, the Audit Committee was convened by the Chair of the Committee, Trustee David Golden. Trustee Golden, will you please provide comments related to the business conducted in today's committee meeting?
Certainly. We kicked off the meeting at 8:30 this morning, approved the minutes. We reviewed the Audit Committee Charter, the Internal Audit Charter, as part of our annual review. We also did an annual review of our internal audit policy and checked on this and the status of the conflict of interest policy. We're currently operating under the TBR version of it. We will have an ETSU version of it by the next Audit Committee meeting. We also reviewed our policy in preventing and reporting fraud, waste, and abuse. We approved a couple of minor changes to the 1920 Audit Plan and then received a variety of reports on audit work performed since our February meeting, and then finally received a and also reviewed the recommendation log. Everything is green or blue, which is good. And then received a report on the audited financial statements from the Comptroller of the Treasury and happy to report, and I think you saw it in the meeting materials, that we received an unmodified opinion, a perfectly clean report. And it's easy to say, hey, it's clean, that's great, and move on, but I wanted just to congratulate President Nolan and his team. A lot of work goes into having a clean financial report, and it's very rare. And so just congratulations around for all of that hard work and the clean review. And that is my report.
Trustee Golden, thank you for that overview. Are there any questions for the Chair of the Audit Committee regarding matters that he just outlined? Seeing none, we'll then move to review of the consent agenda. These materials are found on Tab 3 of your agenda documents. For those who do not have tabbed materials, these are Pages 21 through 51. As noted in the materials, there are several items that have been reviewed by our board committees, and these items include approval of the committee meeting minutes. Are there any items on the consent agenda that members would like to pull for consideration by the full board? Seeing none, I would ask for a motion and a second for the adoption of the consent agenda.
I move we adopt the consent agenda.
We have a proper motion?
This is Kelly Wolf, half second. This is Kelly Wolf, half second.
So we have a motion and a second. Dr. Green, would you please take a roll call vote?
Trustee Ayers?
Yes.
Trustee DeCarlo?
Aye.
Trustee Foley?
Aye.
Trustee Golden?
Aye.
Bishop?
Yes.
Trustee Latimer?
Aye.
Trustee Ramsey?
Aye.
Aye.
Chairman Nieswenger?
Aye.
We're now prepared to sequence the handoff to Dr. Bishop, who will deliver the next agenda item on behalf of the Academic Research and Student Success Committee. These documents are found under Tab 4, which begins on Page 52 of your agenda materials. This document, and once again, we have attempted to keep this agenda very tight. Typically, there would be a number of information items here pertaining to student success, but the action item is a significant action item in the life of an institution, and that is action related to the promotion and tenure of faculty members. Dr. Bishop, I'll now turn to you to present this item.
She needs to unmute. Can't hear you. Can't hear you.
We are, I mean, I have technical difficulties, and am I the only person who's unable to hear Dr. Bishop?
I can't hear. I can't hear either.
No, I can't hear. I can't hear either.
Okay. Dr. Bishop, we cannot hear you. Rob, if we could try to make one quick move through this, if not, I can move through the agenda item.
Dr. Bishop can log off and log back on another agenda item, and maybe she could log back in with computer audio, and it might work.
Okay. So let's, as I mentioned at the beginning, there will be awkward moments in this meeting, and we now have one of our first awkward moments. So, Dr. Bishop, what I would like to suggest is that you log off. We will then move to the Finance and Administration Committee item. We'll take action on those items and then return to take action on the items pertaining to tuition and fees. So, Mr. Chair, members of the board, I would now like to ask that you turn to the items that began on Page 62, which is an overview of the material that moved through the Finance Committee of the Board at their April 1 meeting. Just as a point of context, the Finance Committee of the Board met via a standing meeting through Zoom on April 1 to take consideration of a broad range of issues ranging from tuition and fees to budgets, et cetera. During that meeting, there was a move that was brought forward by staff to adjust what was the proposed recommendation of a fee increase and to take that fee increase at a zero level. I'd like to, in particular, thank President Amir Shaikh, Student Body President, who has spent the bulk of his year as SGA President focused on enhancing the level of services that are provided in our counseling office. You would have seen a proposal to enhance revenue to support an expansion of the counseling services. That will be delayed a year. We have also pulled from consideration any fees in the area that would have been Year 3 for technology enhancement fees, as well as a subsequent year for an expansion of student services. As Dr. King begins to move through the materials, I want to stress that our budgets remain fluid. We may need to call a meeting of the Board late summer to take action as a result of any adjustments in the state budget or to take action as a result of changing enrollment dynamics. But our focus throughout this time and our focus has been, as we prepared these agenda materials, on our people. Our faculty and staff have agreed to put their salary enhancements into a quasi-endowment fund, hopefully bringing that to the Board for approval in January. We recognize the uncertain times that we find ourselves in, and these budget materials and this budget recommendation, I think, really demonstrates our focus on that of caring for students. This is a 0% fee recommendation across all aspects of the campus, medicine, pharmacy, housing. So as Dr. King moves through these materials, just from a structural perspective, BJ will present items that are found on Pages 62, 63, 64, 68, and 73. We'll consider them as a block, and then my recommendation to the board would be that we would vote on these items as a block rather than as individual units. So, Dr. King, I'll turn it to you.
Good morning. I want to start out letting everyone know that the Finance Committee did meet on April 1 and had a very robust discussion about salaries, tuition, and fees, and budgets. It was all presented to them. They had had a preliminary meeting on salary and tuition and fees at our February meeting, but the April meeting was the one where we were going to look to move those forward to the Board as a whole with a budget. So I believe we sent a slide deck to the trustees, and they should have that deck. I will tell you, on Slide 3, the adjustments made from the Governor's revised budget were that our salary pool decreased from a 2.5% salary pool to a 1.5% salary pool, and both College of Medicine and Family Medicine lost some appropriation dollars in the revision that the Governor produced in March. So those adjustments are reflected on Slide 3. On Slide 4, we're talking about the salary increase, and as the salary increase was decreased from 2.5% state-funded to 1.5%, we are making the decision, the committee is recommending, that we take that 1.5% state-funded appropriation for salaries and set it into a reserve pool account, and then a decision will be made at a later date, probably most likely at the November meeting, on what to do with the distribution of funds effective for January of 2021. I am hopeful that in the time period that we're putting the October revised budget together and preparing for the meeting in November, that we'll have clarity on what's happening with state appropriations for FY21. So to set this money aside is the most prudent action we can take, and that is the action that the committee is recommending. If you move to Slide 4 in your deck or Page 63 in your agenda item, we need to revise fees that were approved at the February meeting by the Board. We had approved at the February meeting a fee increase for the College of Medicine, a 2% increase, and a 1.5% increase for the College of Pharmacy, plus increases in housing rental rates. After our discussions at the April 1 meeting of the Finance Committee, the College of Medicine, the College of Pharmacy, and the Office of Housing and Residential Life on campus all agree that they did not want to move forward with the formerly approved fees. So they're all going back to the fee levels that they had in the current fiscal year, FY20. And so since we'd already taken Board action on those increases, today's Board action would be to go back to the level of fees for FY20. And that came up in our Finance Committee meeting. I believe Trustee Santana was in discussions about that at the meeting, and so this is an outcome after our April 1 meeting of the Finance Committee to reduce all these tuition and fee levels back to the current fiscal year. So no increase on any of those for the next year. On your agenda, Pages 64 and 65 is a very verbose discussion of the requirements that were approved by this Board, the things that we consider as we're looking at tuition and fee increases. And so it is rather lengthy and a little bit wordy, but we're trying to satisfy our requirements for looking at certain criteria when establishing increases in tuition and mandatory fees. And those items are state support, cost of attendance, efforts that we've made to mitigate the financial effect on students, the binding tuition rate for the Tennessee Higher Education Commission, and other factors that influence the financial stability of the university. So with that said, on Page 67 and in your slide deck, Slide Number 6, we have a comparative analysis of the tuition and fees across the state of Tennessee and public higher education. And your slide deck actually shows what would have occurred if all schools went up in mandatory and required fees by a 2% increase. I'm going to just provide a little information here and tell you that I believe that the intent of the majority of the public schools in the state of Tennessee will be to have a flat tuition, but they may be increasing on mandatory fees. That's come through the Chief Business Officer discussions that we've had. ETSU was the first school out of the gate saying that they were going to go 0% on tuition, and we're going 0% on mandatory. We're doing it across the board, including College of Medicine, College of Pharmacy, housing, and food service. So although this is informative, I have no clear idea how other schools are going to move forward. As we get that information, we can provide an update to the Board as to what the other schools are proposing. Slide 7 is our proposal for a 0% tuition and mandatory fee increase for fiscal year 21. The related information is at the bottom of your agenda item, Page 67. But that is the proposal for the year and what we're asking the Board to vote on at the end of this. the end of this series of items for discussion. Your slide deck, Number 8, talks about the things that were considered at the university. We did have full and complete robust budget hearings on campus. All units are invited to participate in that through each division. All that information rolls up and is heard and reviewed at a committee level and with the President. So all the factors that we thought were in place in November were considered. Those were adjusted in March after the Governor's revised budget came out, and then we have revised budgets based on the discussions at the Finance Meeting on April 1. So the budget for the main campus includes an increased state appropriation of $2.3 million. This is discussed on your Slide Number 9. Of that, we're proposing to use those funds to increase some dollars needed to fund our increase in employee benefits. Also, we're budgeting for a decline of 100 students in our enrollment calculations. That is consistent with the last two budget cycles. We had budgeted a decline in enrollment for the last two budget cycles as well. And the remaining funds in the state appropriation dollars will be used to offset what THEC said was a 1.7% inflationary factor that all the budgets were initially based on. So that inflationary factor is from the CPI. So if you move to Slide 11 in your deck or Page 69 in your agenda items, I can tell you some of the things that changed from what we presented at the April 1 meeting to the committee. We have written down auxiliary's revenues in the estimated spring budget, and that is due to the action that executive leadership at ETSU took to refund a portion of the housing and the dining fees that were charged for the term that went unused by our students when they needed to return home after spring break. And it amounts to about 45% of the revenue that was booked for both of those units. That's been taken into account in the estimated spring budget, and we're already working through what that means in our financial statements for June 30 close. So we have based our tuition and fee revenue on flat tuition and enrollment down 100 students, and those are about the only changes that were made from what was presented at the April 1 meeting. We're showing an increase in revenue for the main campus of $3.3 million, and of that the majority is from the appropriation dollars. On Slide 12, it shows a graphic of the revenues by source, and you will see on that, as we always discuss at these meetings, that the majority of our revenue is coming from tuition and fees for the main campus. And in our budget for FY21, tuition and fees are 56% of our revenue budget. Auxiliary's amount to about 10% of our budget, 9% on this slide. So it is a pretty critical revenue stream for the university, as you can see. On Slide 13 of your deck, we're looking at how those expenses that we're increasing are allocated across the campus, and so we have salary and benefit increases of about $1.3 million, and that is where we're putting in the salary pool that the Governor has funded at this point in time, plus some benefit adjustments as well. So salary and benefits will be going up by $1.3 million. We've set aside funds in this budget for faculty promotion and tenure pool and some GA dollar increases in pay. We've had to reallocate our OPEB expense across different functions, and so that's shown on this slide. We have about a $700,000 increase in operating dollars for the university. We've also had several reclassifications of scholarship dollars, both out of individual functions down to the scholarship function and also out of just regular operating dollars. And that's just really reclassifications. It's not really new funding. It is primarily reclassifications from operating and other functions within the university. We have some strategic initiatives listed. The first one is in research, $750,000, and that is where our budgets are catching up from last year beginning budgets to this year's, to next year's beginning budgets. The $750,000 is for the Center for Rural Health Research, which was approved, but it wasn't in our budgets that went through for last July because it came late in the legislative session. We also are making some investments in student support services, and that's an investment in esports and some investments in marching band and also investments in student life and enrollment. So all of those are geared for recruitment and retention of our students, and we thought those were very positive reflection on what we're doing at ETSU. If you look on Slide 14, it's another recap of our investments. You'll see that instruction is increasing by $293,000 with investments in faculty that have been made. Our total increase in expenditures is $4.4 million, $4.5 million, and that is based on those reclassifications that we discussed and the increase in the state funding that we're receiving. At the Finance and Administration Committee meeting on April 1, we talked about the position changes that are being made from the original budget 1920 to the proposed budget 2021. And you will see at the bottom of your Slide 14 or on Page 69 of your agenda that we're increasing faculty by 23 positions, we're decreasing Administration 1, Maintenance Technology and Support Positions by 15. They're going down 15, and Professional Support Positions are increasing by 23. So I put a footnote at the bottom of that slide that shows that the faculty increases are in Clinical Rehabilitative Health Sciences, in the College of Education, College of Nursing, the Center for Rural Health Research, Business and Technology, Public Health, and Arts and Sciences. The increase of 23 positions in the Professional Support Line, 16 of those are coming from decreases in Administration, Maintenance, Technology, and Support Positions, and then we're adding positions in Nursing, Education, the Martin Center, Student Life and Enrollment, Center for Rural Health, Institutional Research, and Athletics. And so I think that's the explanation that we talked about at the committee meeting that we wanted to be sure and have detailed for this meeting. I have some graphics on Slide 15 showing the expenditure budget by function. You clearly see that 40% of our expenditures are in Instruction, 9% in Academic Support, 10% in Student Services, and 13% in Scholarship. So that's where we have made historic investments in our campus. The Slide 16 shows it in a different view, and it's showing by natural classification, as we call it, which is salaries and benefits, travel, scholarships, operating expense, and capital. And so salaries and benefits total 63% of the budget for the main campus. Travel is 1%. Scholarships are 13%. So that graphic shows you where we're making those investments by natural classification.
Dr. King, if we could pause for a second. We've moved through a great deal of material pertaining to tuition and fee recommendations as well as the budgets for main campus. This might be an appropriate time to see what questions the board may have on those fee recommendations as well as the general overview of main campus budget before we transition to the College of Medicine and NEAC. So are there questions from the board for either Dr. King or myself? Comments from the Chair of the Finance Committee, Trustee DeCarlo, around the fee recommendations and the general budget material for main campus that has been outlined thus far?
Dr. Nolan, I commend you for the work. You know, it seems from a peer perspective, you're leading and trying to analyze the impact of COVID-19. So I mean, a lot of this is, this is what budgets are about, is trying to anticipate what's coming. And as you know, we're not exactly sure what the impact overall is going to be, but you know, as I look at the changes from when we were together last physically and then on the call, you know, I commend the staff for the adjustments they've made.
Mr. Chair, I want to thank you for the manner in which you led that April meeting, recognizing the fluid nature of the environment we find ourselves in. The big change between that meeting and now, as Dr. King noted, is all of the increases that had been approved by our board back in February for medicine, pharmacy, and housing have all been removed. So when we do take action on these items, it is a 0% adjustment across the board for all facets of the university. Other questions from board members about either the fee, salary, or main campus? If not, we'll turn it back to Dr. King to walk through the next section, which pertains to the College of Medicine.
Hearing no questions or comments, I can just start back into medicine, pharmacy, and family medicine budgets. So I will tell you that Medicine and Pharmacy have prepared new budgets based on a 0% increase. So this is the first look that both the committee and the board have seen on what this actually does to their budget. I was very pleased that after we finished our meeting April 1, discussion started almost immediately with Dr. Block and Dr. Byrd and Dr. Sherlin and Burchett on rolling back fees that were approved at the February meeting. So I'm very grateful for their quick action, which allowed their budget managers to be able to work through revising these numbers that are presented to you today. The College of Medicine budget is on Page 70 in your agenda items, and on Slide 17 of the slide deck, and we have added the information about the Medical Education Assistance Corporation's support for the college. That item, $45 million, supports about 41% of the total expenditures for the college, which is significant, and obviously, we're very grateful for that support, and it is very helpful for Medicine to have that support from Medical Education Assistance Corporation. You'll see that the state appropriation is about 34% of the budget for the college, and tuition and fees are about 9%. Those two pieces, plus the resident participation agreements for medical residents, account for the majority of the institutionally provided revenue sources for their budget. Slide 18 is the same depiction, as you'll see on your agenda, Page 71. They, the revenue for the college is a conservative revenue source. They have written down the revenue, about $300,000 due to, as you may recall, in the September meeting, we approved an out-of-state tuition rate for the College of Medicine that is now set at 30% of the in-state rate. So a College of Medicine student from out-of-state pays the in-state rate plus an additional 30% of the in-state rate. Because of that, the tuition for out-of-state students, the revenue stream from that will decline in this year. So that is the primary driver of that decrease in revenue that you're seeing in the slide deck and the agenda item. The expenditures are going down about $1.6 million for direct expenditures, and that's based on the estimated expenditures primarily driving that in instruction. If you look on the table, you'll see that the estimated expenditures for, in the spring budget declined from October to the spring budget. So they have based the proposed July cost for instruction on some of that activity from the spring budget. So it is going down by about $1.6 million, and that is the largest driver in this presentation for reduction of expenditures. So that's based on current actual. They also have three faculty position increase, and that's being netted out by decreases in Maintenance Technology Support Positions and Professional Support Positions. So they actually are not asking for any new positions. They're just reallocating within their own unit. On Slide Number 19, there's a depiction of those expenditures. You'll see that 67% of the expenditures are in instruction, where we just said there was going to be some decline in expenditure. 10% is in academic support and 10% in maintenance and operation of the physical facilities. Slide 20 shows the same expenditure information, but this is shown by natural classification. And if you do the math, the salaries and benefits at the College of Medicine are 80% of their budget. Travel is less than 1%. That completes the presentation of the College of Medicine budget. Are there any questions on that before I move on to Family Medicine? Seeing and hearing none, I'll go on to Family Medicine. Family Medicine really didn't have to change their budget. We had already put into their budget that was presented at the April 1 meeting. that was presented at the April one meeting, the reduction in salary increase and the elimination of the operating appropriation. And they didn't really make any more changes to their budget. They're anticipating a slight increase in revenue and offsetting that with a slight increase in expenditures. The largest increase in expenditure is in their instructional category. They have hired additional faculty members. Some of that through vacant positions and an additional position that you'll see at the bottom of the chart on page seventy-one. If you look at slide twenty-two, which matches the table on page seventy-one, we've booked a revenue increase for the salary appropriation for the unit. And instruction is going up with investments made and reallocation from other areas within the, the appropriation unit. So that's just a summary. You'll see the depiction of that graphically on pages twenty-three and twenty-four of your slide deck. So instruction again is sixty-six percent of the budget. Academic support is twenty-one percent. Those are the largest drivers that they have. And when you look on slide twenty-four, natural classifications, again, salaries and benefits. The total between the two is eighty-seven percent of their budget is wrapped up in salaries and benefits. Are there any questions on family medicine? Seeing none, I'll move on to College of Pharmacy. College of Pharmacy is agenda page seventy-two, and on your slide deck, it starts on page twenty-five. You'll see clearly that there are no state appropriations for the College of Pharmacy. They're almost one hundred percent dependent on tuition and fees. And that's where asking for them to be in lockstep with the rest of the campus and not increasing tuition and fees, it has more of an impact on College of Pharmacy than any other unit on campus, since they are almost one hundred percent dependent. They have written their revenue down, as you'll see on slide deck, page twenty-six. They've written their revenue down by about a half a million dollars year over year. And that was based on some of the actual experience they had during the year. They've also written down their expenditure by a like dollar amount. They're increasing in instruction and decreasing in some of the other areas of expenditure within their unit to make this budget balance. They are also asking for no additional positions in their budget. If you look at page twenty-seven, it shows the expenditure budget by function. You'll see instruction is sixty-seven percent of the budget for the college. Academic support is twelve percent. Those are the two major functional drivers for their budget. And then if you look at slide deck, page twenty-eight, it shows it by natural classification. And the salaries and benefits are about seventy-five percent of their budget. And they have operating expenditures of about twenty percent to account for their expenditures. So in summary, through the entire budget process here, it has been a lengthy process because of all the changes and considerations. I want to thank all the unit heads who prepare budgets. There are several across campus. This couldn't be done without them. They've been responsive and very interactive with our office to be able to get the information together to present to you today. We had a thorough budget hearing process that really began last October. We're recommending zero tuition and fee increases campus-wide. Our focus has been on investing in student success, retention, and progression. And we're continuing to make investments in our academic programs. Are there any other questions about any item that's been presented in the budget, salary, tuition, and fees this morning?
BJ, I just have one comment. You know, over the last couple of years, you changed the budget philosophy more from a ground up than a top-down. How in this type of environment that has been difficult, if tragic, how do you think that's, that's benefited the university with the involvement of everyone in the budget process?
Well, from my perspective, I think the distributed budget model gives the entire campus more weight in the process and also more buy-in in the process. I think that the entire campus can support a zero percent tuition and fee increase based on the economic climate that we're in and the economic impact of the COVID-19 virus on our student body and their families. So I, I think that, I hope that across campus, when we end this meeting today and we go hear comments from people, that what, what we'll hear is a positive approach to things. I think the number one, the number one thing I see out of everything we've done in changing all this information at a late date in time to get in front of you, to, to go with zero tuition and fees, to hold back our salary dollars until we're more sure of the environment that we're faced with, I think all of that shows that ETSU cares. And I hope that that is what the board members are hearing. I hope that's what the general public will hear. I certainly have heard it from students, from comments that have been made as we process the refunds for housing. We anticipate we're going to start processing the refunds for dining services on Monday. Those processes took significant time and work by staff across campus. And I, I think it, it is a show of support for our students and their families and underlines the whole idea for me that ETSU cares about our students, our students' families, our faculty and staff. And so I think that the distributed budget model allows people to feel a part of the process. And I think they do feel that they're a part of the process now.
Well, we, we appreciate your efforts. It's a fantastic presentation. Thank you.
BJ, on the housing issue of refunds, were those for graduating seniors only? Did we roll forward the undergrad?
We processed housing refunds for all our students in housing. So it wasn't just graduating seniors. If you were a freshman in housing, you also participated in the process. We had several subpopulations within the refunding segment. So some students may have received the entire refund. Others had not paid the entire cost of the housing, so they might have received a partial refund. Other students might have still owed us balances that were related to housing. And so they would have received a partial or zero refund as that was applied to the, the outstanding balances still on the student account. So we had several subpopulations with, within the process. We tried to be very thoughtful about it. We provided information about how the refund was calculated to every student that was in the pool. And we have fielded phone calls and emails about the process. We also allowed students who were not financial aid recipients, and we did not have to refund the money on their student account. We gave them some options. We offered to refund it to them. We offered to move the money forward as a deposit for next fall for housing. And we offered to let them use summer all of the funds to contribute to our relief funds on campus for students in need because of COVID-19 financial impacts. We have had some students take us up on the deposit. I think there were about fifty in that population who've moved money forward for deposits for next fall. We have not ended that timeframe to take us up on that offer. And we, we have a way for students to make a deposit for next fall if they received an actual cash payment as well. So it's been a very interesting process to go through. The team in the Bursar's Office was phenomenal to the level of detail that they went to to try to make these something that we could explain to students, and that would be a rational calculation. I know other schools were doing several different things that we quite candidly didn't feel comfortable doing. So I want to just give a shout out to the Bursar's Office staff and other, other people across campus who helped inform those decisions. But it was a very lengthy process to go through.
Mr. Chair, if I could follow up. We had in excess of fifteen hundred students who would have been eligible for some form of discount. Those discounts, as Dr. King noted, were weighted based upon their out-of-pocket expenses minus scholarships. We did afford the opportunity for students to carry that balance forward as a deposit to next year. But if you're a student who was on, let's say, a complete scholarship at the institution, honors, for example, or room, board, books, fees, et cetera, they incurred no out-of-pocket expenses theoretically in housing. So their refund would have been at a different level than a student who paid everything out of pocket and had a single at Centennial or Governor's. So every single one of these was hand-calculated to ensure that we gave the appropriate refund to students and their families across the campus. The roll-up dollar value of that was one point nine million dollars that we pushed back to students throughout the process.
Thank you.
So what, one kind of frame, see if there are other questions, and then we'll turn to Mr. Ross for the presentation of the materials on capital budget disclosures, which is page seventy-three in your agenda materials. As Dr. King noted, within the College of Pharmacy, as a result of the action to move with a zero percent fee recommendation, they have had to make adjustments to their budget from the form that it was originally proposed. As we look towards the fall, and this also touches on Trustee DeCarlo's question, the move to a distributed budget has enhanced shared ownership across the campus. So as we are looking to potentially adjust budgets in light of changes on the state landscape or the enrollment landscape, we will turn to each of those deans so that the deans can work with their faculty to develop plans that are appropriate to cover adjustments in their area, rather than a one-size-fits-all approach or looking solely to Dassett Hall to make decisions. By moving to a decentralized budget, deans and faculty have greater sense of the revenue generation, and they have greater ownership if we have to move through a period of contraction. I'm hopeful that that contraction will be minimal. But in the event that that does transpire, we will look to the deans for college-level solutions to college-level issues, which is very different than it would have been a decade ago when everyone just simply looked to Dassett Hall for, for guidance and direction. So that, that's one of the biggest changes that you see that reflected in the manner in which pharmacy has adjusted their budget as a result of the move to zero fees. We have a clear directive to campus to be mindful of expenditures. So minimizing positions, minimizing renovations. Clearly, there's no travel. But we've sent a clear direction to campus to be very judicious around expenditures so that we can build up our rainy day funds at the campus level and at the college level in anticipation of what is to come. Are there any further questions on this portion of the block of materials before I turn to Mr. Ross? Okay, seeing and hearing none, we'll now turn to Jeremy Ross. Mr. Ross will provide an overview of our capital budget and disclosure of projects as required by code. This material is found on page seventy-three of your agenda documents. Jeremy?
Thanks, and I can, I can be as brief or provide as much detail as you like. Ultimately, there are about a hundred and fifty million dollars in projects, and they fall in three categories: capital outlay, capital maintenance, and disclosures. One you're familiar with, which has been presented to this board and presented to the state several times, is the Humanities Building. That figure in our last submission was seventy-one point eight million dollars. That number could change a bit. Deadline for that project will be, actually, it's been extended to August. So we'll present that, provide the information through the state's system. And we'll present that again as a priority for the campus, should you approve. In capital maintenance, there are two items, which basically deals with electrical and HVAC. And that totals about seven point six million dollars. Those are campus-wide. We, we hired consultants. We have an evaluation of our buildings, our systems, and priorities for that, should that become funded. In capital disclosures, keep in mind disclosures are, are there. Sometimes there, there's funding available immediately. At other times, they're placeholders as funding does become available. So there are ten projects mentioned there. I won't go through all of them. You know, I would point out a few of them. Maybe the, like, the baseball team hitting area is number nine. That actually includes private funding, donations. And so projects like that are separate sources. If you look at the item number four, Brown Hall Teaching Lab upgrades at two point two million, that's actually multiple labs. So we have the option to move forward on all of those, identify funding for all or portions of such. And I'll highlight one more, the ETSU Innovation Park. That one actually has to do with, College of Medicine has clinics throughout the region. They're paying rent on those. And this is a master plan to look at options in that area. So those are the three. That's what I would put before you handle any questions you may have, Dr. Nolan, if you do it as well, or any comments. But these are the three categories: seventy-one million in capital outlay, seven point six million in capital maintenance, and seventy-three million in capital disclosures.
So in terms of the process for the board's visibility, as you will recall from years prior, these are the projects that are then submitted to the state for consideration in the next-year cycle of the budget. Humanities this year was number eight on the project list. In order for us to resubmit that to the state, this board has to declare intent. The capital maintenance projects move through a state budget perspective, and then the capital disclosures. In order for us to take any action on a project during a year, we have to disclose that to the state in advance. So drawing attention to Innovation Park, that was a topic of a work session during a luncheon at a board meeting earlier this academic year. Clearly, as the COVID landscape changes, we may or may not be able to move on these. Some of the gifts that are pledged may or may not emerge. Things have changed as a result of COVID. But in the event that we did take any action, in order to take that action, the board has to approve, and we have to disclose to the state upfront. So I just wanted to provide a little clarification here in terms of the approach and the timing. Any questions for myself or Mr. Ross? So seeing none, I'd like to offer the following, that we consider all of the items contained under the Finance and Administration Committee, which are found in pages sixty-two to beginning on page seventy-three, and that we consider these in one action by the full board. Subsequently, in a motion, we would approve salary increases for fiscal year '21, revised College of Medicine and Pharmacy tuition increase and rent adjustments, fees for fiscal year '21, the budget as well as capital disclosure. So do I have a motion to approve all of these items as a block?
Latimer's motion moved.
We have a motion by Trustee Latimer and a second by Chairman Nicewonder. Any discussion on these items? Hearing no discussion or further questions, we have a proper motion in a second. Dr. Green, would you take a roll call?
Yes, sir. Trustee Morris?
Aye.
Trustee DeCarlo?
Aye.
Trustee Foley?
Aye.
Trustee Golden?
Aye.
Trustee Grisham?
Aye.
Trustee Latimer?
Aye.
Trustee Ramsey?
Aye.
Trustee Wolf?
Aye.
Chairman Nicewonder?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you. We'll now return to the consideration of the items found on page 52 of your agenda materials. Consideration of promotion and tenure approval for faculty members. Dr. Bishop, hopefully I am turning it to you. Okay, so we're continuing to have technical difficulties. Dr. Bishop is raising the finger for a pause. Okay, so we're going to go with an audible here. Mr. Chair, members of the board, I will walk through the presentation of the materials as found on page 52 of your agenda item. This is one of the hallmark elements in the life of a faculty member at a university, which is the action that they have worked their entire careers to realize, which is the receipt of tenure or the opportunity to move forward through promotion, moving to associate or full professor. You will see that there are a number of faculty who are recommending as an exception. That is detailed for you on pages 53, 54, 55 with background and justification. Then as you move to Appendix A, which outlines each of the individuals by college who we are bringing forward for your consideration. You see those for the College of Arts and Sciences, Business and Technology, Klermer, the College of Clinical and Rehabilitation Health Sciences, the College of Medicine, Nursing, Pharmacy, Public Health, and then one faculty within the university libraries. As a point of context and background, this action has moved through a deliberative process of review at the departmental level, at the college level, by the university provost, and ultimately by my office. So each of the faculty who are being presented to you today have moved through that complete review process, and these faculty members are presented for your consideration for the receipt of the designation of tenure and then the recognition of promotion through the faculty rank. Many moving to the culminating rank of full professor. Would be happy to take any questions regarding these individuals or the process as a whole. Would open the floor to questions. Seeing and hearing none, would welcome a motion for
I'd like to make that motion.
We have a proper motion by Dr. Foley. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Chairman Latimer. Are there any questions regarding tenure and promotion? If not, Dr. Green will turn to you for a roll call vote.
Trustee Ayers?
Aye.
Trustee DeCarlo?
Aye.
Trustee Foley?
Aye.
Trustee Golden?
Aye.
Trustee Grisham?
Aye.
Trustee Latimer?
Aye.
Trustee Ramsey?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Chairman Nicewonder?
Aye.
Unanimous.
The next item on the agenda is a presentation of my report to the board. Recognize that we've been in this Zoom environment here for a while and I will do my best to move quickly through my comments, but Mr. Chair, there are a number of substantive items that I would like to have the opportunity to walk through. And in some respects, it, this has been a period of time since our last meeting unlike any other. I present this report to you on the seventh week in the month of March. And as we move through the conclusion of the seventh week of the month of March, I just wanted to reflect a little bit on some of the actions that your staff has taken since we were last together for a called meeting on the 23rd. I'm going to try to frame all of my remarks this morning within two words, and those words are cares and safe. As you'll see, we're an institution that cares deeply about its people and it's already been reflected in the actions of the Board of Trustees today to hold fees constant across all aspects of the university. But as you look back over the seven weeks in March, I want to remind you that on March 12th, I announced that beginning on the 23rd, all in-person classes would move to an online format through then April 9th. When the board convened on the 23rd, I provided some updates and announced that that provision of instruction through an online format would continue through the end of the semester. On April 1st, our Finance Committee met to consider fees, budgets, and made the recommendation that we affirmed today. But in the intervening period, I have been in constant conversation with Chairman Nicewonder and members of the Executive Committee, keeping them informed of issues as they emerge across campus. And I want to thank the members of the Executive Committee for the invaluable insights that you've provided to me during these unprecedented times. I want to try to format some things within the area of academics, service, outreach, and enrollment. And within the academic area, as we've transitioned to our online format, it's brought a host of issues and opportunities across our campus's academic infrastructure. The move to online courses was a Herculean task, to say the least, and I want to thank our faculty and our staff who've worked tirelessly to meet the needs of our students who depend upon ETSU for support and services. Higher education's often the subject of a great deal of criticism, and those critics often state that we are slow, cumbersome, bound by archaic structures, and we're incapable of change. But if the past few weeks have shown you anything, it's that when tested, this campus can rise to any challenge and that we have a can-do attitude that has really emerged across campus in the past seven weeks. And that is a palpable feeling that has energized this institution. There are some significant academic actions that have transpired since our called meeting on the 23rd that I feel compelled to brief the board on. We just took action a second ago on tenure and promotion. Given the broad challenges facing faculty across the campus from the suspension of community engagement and service work, the closure of some research facilities, the transition to online, we've taken steps to provide the option for faculty to suspend the tenure clock for those who are working through the tenure and promotion process. For those who are striving to realize their professional dreams at ETSU, we want to take care to ensure that the COVID-19 outbreak does not disrupt their tenure path. So for those who elect to pause their clock, we have authorized the ability for faculty to do so. Based upon the recommendations of the Shared Governance Work Group, we have implemented a pass/fail policy for our students for all undergraduate courses in the spring 20 semester. This went into effect on the 31st of March. Our undergraduate students have until June 15th to exercise that option that allows them to complete the semester, to get assessment of their performance in courses, and then to determine if it's within their best interest to take this pass/fail option. Do want to stress for the board that this applies only to courses in the spring semester, and depending upon how delivery moves forward into the fall, we may revisit this again at that point. But the pass/fail process was put in place this month. The hallmark activity in the academic space in the spring are commencement exercises, which would occur within the next couple of weeks. We announced just a few days ago that we have moved our commencement activities to a virtual environment. I want to thank Jennifer Clements, Dr. Donahoe, and the Registars Office and others for the work that they're doing to structure this. I can assure you that of the many decisions that I've had to make in the past seven weeks, this was among the most difficult. But we made this decision in the interest of trying to keep our faculty, staff, and students safe. It would not be prudent to bring 10,000 people together in two and a half weeks in the dome. As much as I would love to have the opportunity to personally congratulate students, it's just not appropriate at this time. However, we will hold a standalone commencement ceremony for the graduates of the spring class in December, and we welcome they and their families to join the university at that time. The Colleges of Medicine and Pharmacy are also planning virtual commencement activities, some by Zoom or other technologies, and we're going to do our best to really make this a chance to celebrate. Want to thank Dr. Donahoe and the staff in the Registars Office, who for the past three days have been distributing caps and gowns to students who've coming through to pick them up in a drive-by setting, recognizing appropriate social distancing. We've had more than 200 students who've come by in the past few days to physically pick up their caps and gown. So our students are excited. I can tell you there's everyday students out taking graduation pictures on campus, and we will celebrate their recognitions in a virtual means here in the near future. We've also had a number of things that have moved across campus that signify the academic excellence that exists at East Tennessee State University. Just last week, we learned that the university school was ranked eighth in the state of Tennessee. It is the top high school east of Nashville, and I want to congratulate Dr. Parton and all the staff at UH. This ranking is a reflection of the quality of the faculty, not the building in itself. But to say we have the number eight high school in the state of Tennessee, the top-ranked school east of Nashville on our campus is an affirmation of the quality of instruction there. Announced last week and want to bring to the board's attention that we've selected the next class of Presidential Fellows. They are Dr. Nick Hegemeyer, who is a faculty member in the College of Pharmacy, where he serves as Vice Chair and Associate Professor of our Pharmacy Practice, and he's Director of Student Professional Development. Dr. Jody Palaha is a clinical psychologist and Associate Professor in our Department of Family Medicine. Many of you may know Dr. Palaha. She's also a member of the Washington County Board of Commissioners. And the final Presidential Fellow is Dr. Megan Quinn, an Associate Professor of Epidemiology in our Department of Biostat and Epi in the College of Public Health. And I look forward to working with these faculty members as we transition into the fall. Our College of Pharmacy was ranked first in the state for its residency match rate and 12th in the nation. And our College of Social Work, Megan Dew, a second-year MSW student who's going to graduate in a couple of weeks, was named the 2020 National Association of Student Social Workers Student of the Year. Our College of Nursing, just a couple of weeks ago, was ranked the number 11 online college of nursing in the country and the only college of nursing in the state of Tennessee to be listed in the top 20. In the College of Medicine, Dr. Alak Agawal was awarded a $1.85 million R01 grant from the NIH to continue his work around possible treatment for pneumococcal infection. And then as an institution, we were designated yet again for the 10th year in a row as a military-friendly institution. But this year, we received a top 10 national designation, which is the highest designation that we've received to date. Outside of those academic elements, I really, really cannot stress how proud I am of the work that we as a campus have done during this outbreak to embody our community service mission. We're an institution that cares deeply about the region, and you see that through the following. Our healthcare heroes in the press, and I briefed the Executive Committee on this. We have made Lucille Clement Residence Hall available to employees of Ballard who are working on the front lines and may not feel comfortable going home to their families and need a place to stay. So we have made Lucille Clement Residence Hall available to Ballard for healthcare practitioners throughout the summer as they're seeking housing accommodations during the COVID-19 outbreak. We've been actively involved in testing both through ETSU Health and then this past week in conjunction with the Department of Health, when more than 890 people were tested on our campus. Sodexo, our food service provider, has been making weekly deliveries of warm meals to food pantries across the region. And given the dire needs of food insecurities across the region, I cannot thank Sodexo enough for their willingness to partner with us here. We've had widely discussed in the media the work that Dr. Keith Johnson and Bill Hemphill are doing. And I want to in particular thank Trustee Golden and Dennis Courtney for the work that they've done at Streamworks to help us produce face shields for healthcare workers across the state and across the region. Our Clements College of Education has launched a homework hotline where nearly 50 undergraduate students are assisting as tutors and mentors to K-12 students in all grades and in subject areas such as math, science, language arts, and early childhood education. So for those of you who are at home and you're really wrestling with, how do I homeschool? Please reach out to Klermer and our students can help via Zoom, Skype, email, or phone as students are working through how do we keep on pace during this very disruptive time. I want to thank our third-year students at Quill and particularly Victoria Stable for the work that they've done for drive-through collections for hand sanitizer, disinfecting wipes, latex gloves, surgical masks, et cetera. We've run two of these and will probably run one more, but an opportunity for Quill and students to help in their leadership and advocacy. And then I want to thank Dr. Charles Collins and everyone in Gattin for the work that they're doing to produce hand sanitizers in our compounding labs that are helping our clinics at ETSU Health. One of the items that has received a lot of coverage in the press is the CARES Act that was passed by Congress a couple of weeks ago. We are completing our application to receive these stimulus funds. We'll send that to Washington very shortly. And within the next couple of weeks, we'll be in a position to begin the distribution of funding to our students. In total, the university will receive more than $11 million to support our students. The bulk of our investments will go towards elements that assist students along their path to degree. I anticipate that we'll put somewhere between $500,000 and $750,000 in an emergency crisis fund that helps directly meet the needs of students who are struggling with the fact that they've lost their job and how do we pay rent? How do I buy groceries? How do I pay bills? We have an existing fund that's in place at the present moment. And in conversations with Dr. Michelle Berg yesterday, we're pushing out on a weekly basis about $10,000 a week to students with issues ranging from inability to pay rent to just struggling to put food on the table for the families. To date, those have all been institutional resources, and this CARES funding from the federal government will help to assist and supplement that activity. We will bring forward to the board more information about our plans once we finalize them next week. But the bulk of these funds will all go to directly assist students with needs to meet housing costs, cost of tuition, and other aspects that align with our retention and persistence goals. We are actively engaged in efforts to ensure that we are positioned to launch classes on campus in the fall. And within the Department of Enrollment Services, under the leadership of Dr. Sherlin with admission activity, we are holding nightly outreach activity events to students, to parents, to try to answer their questions during this uncertain time. And in last week alone, more than 10,000 individuals viewed or participated in sessions answering questions about the path to college, housing, residence life, financial aid. And I want to thank Dr. Sherlin and his staff for the work that they're doing there. But Mr. Chair, in the spirit of ETSU, we've also attempted to personalize some things. And our Alumni Association has reached out to employees across the campus who are alum, and we're literally taking out pen and paper and writing notes to undergraduate students, checking in on them to make sure that they're doing well. Our alumni are also reaching out to prospective students, sharing their stories about East Tennessee State University and encouraging them to enroll at the institution. But we're taking it one step farther. Under the leadership of Scott Jeffers, we've launched a campaign to personally contact every single student at this university to check in, to see how they're doing, to see if they're experiencing issues, but also just to let them know that we're here and we care. Every member of our senior leadership campaign is participating in this effort. I've got my list of 15 students that that I'm gonna call next week to check in to see how they're doing. And I'm excited about this effort and the letter-writing campaign because I really think it reflects the best of our spirit, a spirit that demonstrates we're here and we care. I know that we spent a lot of time on budgets, and there's a lot of question and uncertainty about budgets moving forward. I have yet to receive guidance from the state on what we anticipate in terms of potential adjustments as a result of the COVID-19 outbreak. But we know that we're in a state that's heavily dependent upon sales taxes, and I anticipate that there will be adjustments and will respond accordingly. As it relates to enrollment, we are doing everything we can to ensure that our current students are successful in the classroom and return in the fall, but that prospective students who want to come to East Tennessee State University feel that, that this is the, the right choice for them. At this juncture, we really don't have firm estimates on what enrollment will indicate. It's kind of hard because you can't get into the classrooms. All the traditional forms through which we've reached out to students have been disrupted. But we're using Zoom, we're using email, we're using text. Our admissions counselors are actively engaged in efforts to ensure that we make our class. But in my conversations with colleagues from across the country, most institutions such as ours are anticipating potential reductions of 10% in their overall enrollment for the fall. And I would not be surprised if, if our numbers were somewhat similar. I had mentioned during the budget section that we are pushing funds out to students, $1.9 million for housing refunds. We will move meal plan refunds this week. But if you look at that lost revenue, coupled with the lost revenue of camps and conferences and other activities, to date, we have experienced more than $10 million in direct losses as a result of the COVID-19 outbreak at the campus. That does not include losses to the practice plan revenue on the MEAC side. So when all this is said and done, by the time we start the fall, those lost revenues could, could be near $15 million. But your staff is working through carefully to manage the budget to ensure that that does not have a negative impact on our employee base. We are, Mr. Chair, members of the board, actively engaged in scenario planning. I want to thank Dr. Rich Roda and others for their work in helping me think through what budget situations could look like. The university's weathered budget challenges in the past, and I'm confident that if we keep our values in front of us that we'll be able to navigate whatever uncertainties we face. I, I'm not here today to offer some type of Pollyannaish thoughts that everything's gonna go back to normal, but I do want to stress that this is not a time to panic. It's a time to plan. It's a time to look ahead. It's a time to take deliberative action, and it's a time to ensure that we're making decisions that keep our campus safe. And as we move through the coming weeks, I'll keep the campus and the board informed as conditions evolve. On that evolving landscape, when we met on the 23rd, I'd mentioned that our endowment had moved from north of $100 million to just slightly above 80. I'm pleased to report that as of Tuesday, our endowment had rebounded, and the corpus was sitting right at $91 million. That's about a 10% decline over where we were at our peak, but it's more, more than $10 million over where we were at the bottom. So I want to thank Pam Ritter and, and all of the members of the Investment Committee for the work that we're doing there. The corpus has rebounded. Our investment portfolio is conservative, and just wanted to update the board that we've experienced somewhat of a rebound in terms of the endowment base. Also want to thank Pam and her staff for a campaign that they have launched to help students. It's titled Bucks Help Bucks. To date, more than 240 individuals have contributed, and it's only been live for about a week and a half. We've raised $55,000 to date to help students with critical financial needs. We've got a couple big corporate gifts that are in the queue, and we hope to be able to double that amount by the time that the campaign wraps up. I know that everyone on the call today has questions about decisions related to the physical reopening of campus, to contingency planning, to athletics, and a broad range of items. At this juncture, there are more unknowns regarding each of these than there have been weeks in the month of March. But our approach has been to keep what's focused on immediate in front of us. And the immediate is to ensure that our students have a successful close to the spring semester, that they have access to technology, and that they're positioned to graduate. Once we move past these milestones, we'll begin to tackle the next challenge. Next week, I will announce the formation of a work group that will be chaired by Dr. David Linville, that will advise my office on the process protocols and alternatives through which we will consider the opening of campus in the fall. These efforts will be aligned with ongoing work to frame budget scenarios in anticipation of opening campus. And our goal throughout this time is to ensure that we keep our campus safe and that we model our institutional values. And as I look across the Brady Bunch screen in front of me, I see trustees who are modeling these values. I see trustees who have educational foundations that are working with high school counselors across the state to assist students along the path to college and to assist students with the challenges of life. I see trustees who have incurred personal losses in their businesses placing their employees first to ensure that their employees are able to put food on the family, food on the tables for their families. I also see trustees who, when their lives were disrupted by tornadoes and storms, took time to call me to make sure that our students were doing all right. And they did that before I had time to call them to make sure that they were doing okay, even though tornadoes had come through Chattanooga. And I also see trustees who've called me to make sure that I'm doing okay. And I want to thank you for the care and compassion that you've displayed to me. I can tell you that some days have been better than others. I can tell you that there's things that I'm afraid of now that I was never afraid of before, like doorknobs and gas pumps. I can tell you that I wash my hands more in one day than I did usually in a week. And I can tell you, there's a lot of nights when I wake up in the middle of the night worrying about those that I love and worrying about those that work at this university. But one thing that I don't worry about is this board. Because this board not only values this institution, but they've modeled those values, and I want to thank the board for that. And as the seventh week of March comes to a close, I'm ready to tackle whatever's left in the month of April. Our former Provost, Dr. Bach, used to say that April was the cruelest month of the year on a college campus because it was the year in which the month in the year in which we had to say goodbye, to say goodbye to students as they were preparing to graduate, to say goodbye to faculty who were preparing to retire. But the college calendar is geared towards April being a culminating month. We're going to culminate our calendar differently than we have in the past, and we're gonna face some things that are uncertain. But throughout those uncertainties, the thing that I've realized is the beauty of this campus, a campus that places people first, a campus that cares deeply. And I tell you, if we've tackled the past seven weeks, we can tackle anything that's on the horizon. Are there gonna be challenges? Yes. Are there gonna be budget issues? Yes. Will we experience enrollment declines? Maybe. But we can't get lost in those issues. We must stay focused on our students. We must stay focused on the region as a whole. I'm proud to be a small part of a campus that cares deeply about its students, and I assure you, we'll do all that we can as we make decisions to reopen the campus to keep them safe. You've seen that today in the actions of the board, and I'm confident that you'll see that in the months to come. Mr. Chair, that concludes my report, and I'd be happy to address any questions from the board.
Thank you, Dr. Nolan.
Mr. Chair, seeing no questions from the board, would like to move to the next item on the agenda. And this item is congruent with my comments about the difficulty in April because April is a period in which we are watching those who we've had a chance to, to watch for a long time spread their wings and prepare to fly. One of those individuals is our student trustee, Mr. Christopher Santana, who is preparing to virtually walk across the stage, receive his master's degree, and move on to the next phase of his educational and professional journey. Mr. Chair, there is a formal resolution in your agenda materials. But before moving through that resolution, I, I want to just provide a little bit of context on Mr. Santana, on Trustee Santana. I had the chance to meet him when he was a high school student. He physically sat in my office, and if you've heard him tell his story, that formative experience of being part of the university school shaped not only his decision on where to attend college, but it has shaped his decisions on how he's approached that experience here at the university. He's an outstanding leader on our campus. He has provided a great voice for the students on this board. And I offer the following resolution for your consideration. Whereas Christopher Santana's outstanding record of student leadership and scholarship at ETSU earned him a position on our Board of Trustees. And whereas Mr. Santana has demonstrated loyalty and devotion to the ETSU community since first engaging in an exchange agreement with his high school in Ecuador and the university school in 2014. And whereas Mr. Santana quickly became one of our university's greatest student leaders while enrolled in our College of Business and Technology, including being named Senator of the Year by the ETSU Student Government Association, in part for authorizing seven items of legislation. And whereas Mr. Santana has fulfilled vital leadership roles, not only in SGA, but in the Economics Club, the Hispanic-American Student Community Alliance, and the Student Finance Association. And whereas Mr. Santana, while deeply involved in campus life, successfully completed two BBA degrees at ETSU in economics and finance, and is completing his MBA. And whereas Mr. Santana has ably represented the interests of our students during his tenure on the Board of Trustees, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees extends its deepest appreciation and congratulations to Christopher Santana for his exemplary service and for representing the very highest ideals of ETSU. Christopher, would you like to offer any comments?
Dr. Nolan, members of the board, I am speechless at those things you all say about me. I, I'm just trying to do my best, make this university proud, make my parents proud. And if anything, I should be the one saying thank you. Thank you for this opportunity of letting me serve in this board, for letting me guide this campus, especially through this challenging times. It's been quite a unique experience. And I remember my first day as a board member, I was scared that I just wasn't gonna fit. But I realized, took a step back, and like, I'm at ETSU. This is their board. It's, it's gonna be a welcoming board. And I, I was not wrong. Since day one, all the board members made me feel like I was at home. And I got confident, and I started talking a little bit more in the board meetings. And I want to deeply thank them from the bottom of my heart. Thank you. Thank you, and I hope I didn't let you down.
Thank you.
You were wonderful.
Excellent, Christopher. You said it right.
You've done a great job.
Yes, you have.
Absolutely.
Congratulations, Christopher,